Moving forward.
Okay, so let me stop there for a second and see if Mike or Jeff have any questions about that that context and what are charges then today around this policy? Okay, that all makes sense, okay? Okay, so if we if we look at the the current policy that we have on file, which is the top part of that document, you'll see there's a lot, there's a lot more detail in there. And there are some in terms of like where it says down below one and two, it's sort of like how the nominations take place and so on. And then there are also some, there's some content in there that is not in the regional agreement. So if we scroll down, the regional agreement is pretty much bare bones, allows more probably more flexibility. The the top paragraph in the regional agreement pertains to the that election that we missed. But it basically lays out the terms that the school committee will, school committee members will assume once they're elected to them. Elected in that first election whenever that occurs. So the the part that I put, I don't know if you can see that yellow highlighting, it says thereafter at the biennial state elections at the term of office of the committee, as the term of office of the committee members expire, there should be elected the required number of committee members for each town for four years until new people are elected after that. And then it says how to deal with vacancies and then the organization piece. And the organization just says promptly upon the appointment and qualification of the initial members and annually annually thereafter. The committee shall organize and choose by ballot, which is not above in the in the policy language, a chairperson and a vice chair from its own membership at the same meeting or any other meeting, the committee shall appoint a treasurer and a secretary who may be the same person and who need not necessarily be members of the committee. Choose such other officers as it deems advisable. Determine the terms of office for its officers, except the chairman who shall be elected annually. And it's funny, you know, it says it's provided above, but what it says above to me is that the chairperson and the vice chairperson are appointed, I mean voted in annually, the first line says qualification of initial members and annually thereafter, upon the appointment and qualification of successors, the committee shall organize and choose by ballot a chair and vice chair. So that suggests to me that both of those people are elected annually. But but you also seems that you also get to say the term. So I don't, I'm not sure I completely understand the language here because if you said, if you setting the term, couldn't you say the term is, we want those people to be in those roles for two years or three years, but you still have to reelect them every year? I don't understand how the you how you determine the terms, but you're committed to having to, are you only determining the terms for the treasurer and the secretary? Terms of office? I'm not exactly sure what this.
Susan, I think any any committee I've ever seen operate is when the the new chair is elected, then all of those other positions are elected also.
Annually.
Whatever it is, whatever. Whatever the term is for the chair, the 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 term for the other positions follows. So the chair gets elected and then once once that chair is presides over the meeting, then they elect the other one. So there's not a different term for the other members. That's what I've seen in the committees I've worked with so far. So my guess is that's the common practice.
Yeah. So I guess we we sort of just ignore the determine the terms of office phrase. Or or it's open to say the secretary and treasurer could be longer terms maybe, but I assume that this is just an annual organization. It seems to say to me that the chair and the vice chair are elected annually. And so that seems normal to me. In the current policy, there's all this other stuff about, was it here that I was reading that the? Hang on.
Right there in number two, on election, new chairman will preside call for the election of the vice chairman and the secretary in order.
Yeah, yeah. So if we were to redo this, this or make a proposal to the school committee for how this should be rewritten, should we bring up some of that line with that this language about the election will proceed as follows? Should we keep that language in there and then just continue with language from the regional agreement? It seems to me the top.
Why did, why was it, why does it have one year? What, who determined that it was going to be like a one year position?
I don't know. It was part of the regional agreement.
No, but in the original.
I don't know, but they both say that.
Yeah, probably was taken, they probably, the regional piece was probably taken from there.
Well, it's because, no, it's because we had an election every year. So we always, it was always, the policy was to to do it after every election because you had a new member. So we had, we did annual elections because it was a three year term rotating every year. So you always had two new members on the committee every year. So I think it was because it was annual election. So personally, I think we should remove annual, anything that says annually, and I think we should go to biannually or some type of wording that says post election, right? I think the seat, my recommendation would be the seats all be for two year, two year terms.
Yeah, I I think that's, I mean, I don't know if that will inhibit anybody from wanting to be chair, but it seems to me that to become fluent in the chair's position in particular, you need two years. I guess the only difference is if you kept it annually, you allow for reaffirmation that you want the chair to continue. And if things are not going well, or the chair is finding it too burdensome, too much of a time commitment or whatever for, you know, their life, they have the option to come off. So that's, that's the advantage of just keeping it annually.
I mean, you could probably, that stuff can be done anyways, right? I mean, if you had a.
Why do you need a term? Why do you need a term? Why can't you just put until a successor's elected? I mean, someone can always call for a vote for a new chair. I've seen that done.
You can make a motion at any time to, if you don't think a chair is doing something.
Or a chair can resign at any time, can say, you know.
Yeah, but that that sort of puts the burden on the membership to have to insert themselves as if something is wrong as opposed to, or when something is wrong, as opposed to just having a regular routine when you revisit the roles. And I mean, I'd be more comfortable with with an annual election or a biennial election. I guess my only concern about a biennial election is whether that would inhibit anybody from saying they want to take on their role.
Susan, I agree with you, you know, make it annual, it becomes a repetitive process. If things are going well, it should be quick and smooth, the person can stay. If things aren't going well, you know, it takes the burden off of the rest of the committee for having to have that one person stand up and make a, you know, motion to do whatever that would, you know, that kind of looks negative, right? Sort of a more difficult.
Yeah.
You know, if things are going smoothly, then every year the election happens and it's the same person just keeps on. I think what you are saying, you know, I agree, it probably takes more than a year to really get into a groove.
Yeah.
But if it's going that way, if it's trending positive, then there shouldn't be any problem with, you know, just sort of reaffirming election, you know?
You guys should, you, I mean, you guys should write it up that way then, right? I mean, that's, we're gonna, this is all going to be open debate at, you guys, the policy subcommittee. So you guys are going to make your recommendation and then we'll talk and we'll have this, you will have, I don't want to step on toes right now because I'm not policy subcommittee. So we'll have the same conversation at school committee, right? When we talk about it, right?
So I guess I, I'm interested in your perspective, Jim, on whether you think having a two year commitment to the chair or vice, particularly the chair's role, might inhibit people from stepping forward?
Um.
Already making a commitment to be on the committee for four years.
Yeah, I mean, there's all the things you need to talk about, right? There's all the things you need to, you need to determine if you're going to maintain language that says the chair needs to swap between between the communities, right? And the old language, in the old language, I think it said somewhere, I thought I read it, maybe not, that it would rotate between Berlin and Boylston, right? Like, so, you know, the committee is going to need to decide if that's still a process. Now that we're a regional district, is that really a fundamental process that needs to remain as well? And then you need to decide terminology and guidance around if a, if the school committee wants a chair to stay, right? Like, I've been on for two, I think it's two years now. So, you know, would I do it again? Sure. But that doesn't mean I have to do it again, right? Somebody else may want to do it. So, but if the committee wanted me to do it again, we need to have language in there that says, and then we do, and I think that's the right language in there that says based on a unanimous vote, right? Because unanimous unanimous vote dictates that everybody agrees that the chair might have done a good job and should continue as chair, right? And whatnot. So, I mean, those are the other things that you gotta think about. Do you want to have those discussions yearly or biyearly, I guess?
Well, I, but your example is also a good example of why an annual election would be beneficial, because you've just completed two years. So would you be committing, if it was biannual, you would be biennial, you would be committing to another two years? Whereas you may want to just commit to one more year to make a three year term.
Yeah, but I think, yeah, but I think we that's sure, that can happen. And I can always, I could always resign at any point and we could figure all that out, right? But you need, I think you need to have the process fundamentally set that says it's a two year term.
With an option to extend.
With the option to extend or option to re. I just want to word it that way.
Just no term limit, no limit on how long you might stay in that, you, anybody might stay in that role. If the committee votes.
No, because I think it's, it's all about building. The way I look at this, it's all about building capacity, right? It's about, how do we fundamentally build capacity as a school committee so that the school committee continues to thrive and do well and go on and have people want to want to join school committee, be on school committee, play a role, like, you know, step up and be chair, be vice chair, all those things, right? Like, I think we need to be in a position where we have, you know, you're let's think about this way, you're currently the vice chair, but you don't want to become chair of school committee, right? Maybe that's not the right idea for school committee. Maybe we want someone to be vice chair who then does want to become chair.
Right, I agree.
You know, and then maybe we start fundamentally changing the process where the vice chair now is part of the agenda meetings and stuff like that. And they don't control it, but maybe they're part of it so that it can fill in and, you know, I just think we need to build capacity. One thing we've learned over the last 12 to 18 months is we had three spots turnover, right? And we're kind of building up, putting ourselves in a position to, you know, make sure that we have people who want to be here and do those things and, you know, you know, I guess so. But again, it's up to, I think it's you and Mike's decision how the policy subcommittee, you know, wants to.
So I, I, one question I have is your aim was to, I mean, whatever policy we we propose is not is not going to completely apply in June because June is kind of an exception year, right? Because we're in between this whole election business.
We're going to approve, I think we should, this is my suggestion, this you guys decide. My suggestion would be we approve the policy written the right way for moving forward after the next election. And then we redo it in June and we make the motion to do this with the amendment of this vote will only take us to the next, whenever the next election is. So when we elect our officers in June, it'll only be for the, it'll be have the amendment of an end, a stop time of whenever that election is. And then we'll, and then everything will kind of reset and be in order after that.
Okay, so I'm, what I'm concerned about right now is that, well, is whether we can actually draft it right here or whether we should draft it away from the table and bring it back. Which means we wouldn't, if we don't draft it right now, we won't have, are you thinking that the first read will be tonight?
We have it on the agenda, I think, right?
Okay.
So we could.
Need to draft it.
We can always, so here's the thing, if we feel like it's not going that way, I'm, I know we do our votes and our business items at the end of our meetings. If we feel like we get to the May 4th meeting and there's still a little, we're not set to vote on it at that point, and we need maybe a little more tweaking, I'm okay voting on it, moving the vote for that particular thing up to the beginning of our agenda in June, voting on it and then doing our elections, right? So, but I think worst case, worst case scenario, that's what we do, but but I think we should try to vote on it in the May 4th meeting if we can.
Okay. So we have a couple of of content issues to to decide, Mike, one and Jeff, one is, do we want to recommend annual or biennial organization? Re revoting of the officers? And what was the other one that you were just saying? And how long, and do we want, what do we want to say about terms? Do we want them to to be it two year terms, which would be half of everybody's in the future would be half of everybody's term on the school committee? With the option to, if if the committee's option to extend somebody's term in an office as long as they want. So we have a term, a term issue. So let's deal with one, one thing, which is how often? Well, let's deal with the terms. So how how long do we want to have, recommend that people stay in the office of chair and vice chair?
Guys, I'm, I'm gonna drop, is that okay? I'm gonna let you, I'm gonna, I actually have a call at 10:30, so I'm. I appreciate you guys letting me join.
Hey, Jim, check your email. I wrote, wrote your note about page.
I saw that. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yep.
Right.
All right. So.
If you do, if you do a year like you two were just talking about, then you don't have to have a term, right? You just, you just, you just go every year.
Election at annual organization.
Then you don't have to have a term. You know, the other part in this, you have, there's a piece in there in the second paragraph about the chair rotating between towns. Are you going to keep that in?
Yeah, thank you for putting that back on the table. I don't know where that came from.
That was probably when that was before it was regionalized, it was separate town. So there were separate committees at one time. There used to be three committees, not when I was here, but there used to be three committees. So when they, so when they did the regional committee, they would go between the two towns because the two towns actually had separate committees. So, but now there's only one committee, so regionalized, you'll have to decide if that's something that sends a message that, you know, you know, the.
I mean, being on the committee, my my personal take on rotating the chair between the two towns is, is, is not important. What's important is that you have effective leadership. And if that effective leadership and available effective leadership happens to reside in one town over a series of years, I don't, I personally, and the committee has entrusted that person to continue leading, I I don't have a problem with that. I don't know what the town's perceptions of that would be, but I I think it would be unwise for us to have somebody from the next town assume the leadership of the committee if they don't feel they're skillful at leading the committee, they don't have the time to lead the committee, that that would be problematic, in my sense. What do you think, Mike?
I think if we're still going to require that membership is split equally.
Yeah.
It might be a good thing to keep. But then again, you know, if you have annual elections, that could solve that problem as well.
How how does that solve that?
If we take out the requirement to flip it between the towns, then having annual elections, if the leadership from one town isn't seen as being good, then you can always have a vote and change it.
Yeah, but what if nobody actually steps forward? What if, what if all the leaders, let's just say, let's just pretend, all the leaders for 10 years, the leadership of the school committee has come from Berlin? What, what, how might that be, could that be a perception problem from the towns? I don't, I I can't imagine that it would be if the committee was doing the election, I mean, they're electing who they want to be leading the group. I don't know why that would be a problem myself. So, and and I, my guess is that it wouldn't be a problem because otherwise they would have included it in the regional agreement and they didn't. So I think we can drop that out myself. Do you see a problem with that, Jeff? Coming from.
No, I think it can be dropped out. I think it's, you know, like a vestige of a, a time when there was two, two, at least two committees, at one committee for each town. So.
Okay, all right. So I, what if we just focus on very, this very simple notion as it's represented in the regional agreement? Promptly upon the appointment and qualification of the initial members and annually thereafter, the committee shall organize and choose by ballot a chairperson and vice chair from its own membership. At the same meeting or any other meeting, the committee shall appoint a treasurer and secretary, may be the same person, don't have to be members of the committee, and determine the terms of office, terms of their office, maybe that, so that would be all about the treasurer and secretary. So you could, you could appoint technically, I mean, if we leave that, we just take out reference to terms of office. Choose other office officers as it deems advisable. Period. Or take out the line, take out the, so say, choose such other officers as it deems advisable and prescribe the powers and duties of any of its officers, fix the time and place for its regular meetings and provide for the calling of special meetings. So we're taking out a sort of a line there. We're taking out determine the terms of their office of its officers.
Susan, you just said something that made me think of something. You said this is referring to the Treasury Secretary, Treasurer and Secretary. I don't think it's not, it's, it's saying, you know, if you need some other officer, the only officers right now, the chair, vice chair, treasurer and secretary, right?
Yeah, no, leave, leave in the phrase that says choose such other officers as it deems advisable.
Yeah, so that's what the determine the terms of office is referring to is any.
Oh, I see. Terms of office, but it says of its officers. Okay, so if.
That's a little.
Yeah. Clear, choose such other officers as it deems advisable. And I'm just going to put in, and just to see what it looks, determine the terms of their office.
Yeah.
And then take out of its officers, except the chairman who shall be elected annually as provided above, take that out. And and prescribe the powers and duties of any of its officers, fix the times and place for its regular meetings and provide for calling of special meetings. And I think that 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 says what, what, it keeps it open, it lets people vote every year and affirm the leadership or change the leadership. And it doesn't, it doesn't bind people in with, it has to be from Berlin or has to be from Bo, Boylston. It it allows people to go ahead and make changes. The thing that's not here that, you know, maybe is just going to come up verbally, but I think one of the the key things here that I wouldn't mind articulating, but it's more of a recommendation or shall consider, it's a consideration. Every time the leadership changes, and Jeff, you can speak to this, every time the leadership changes of the school committee, it creates new kinds of stressors for the superintendent. Because this, it's a new person to figure out how to work with. It's a new meeting schedule. It's a new, they see their role in a different way than the previous person in terms of how they interface with the superintendent and set agendas and do all that stuff. So it's, it's, Jeff, what's your perception on frequent changes to the chairmanship?
I don't think it's good at all. I mean, it's not, it's no different than having, you know, frequent exchanges in the superintendent or any of the other central office position. It just makes it more difficult because it takes time, you know, it takes time to figure out, it takes time to figure out your job.
Yeah.
You know, it takes time. I mean, I even see the gym, Jim's a different chairman as far as working with me now than he was when he started.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I wonder if we want to say anything about you know, I don't know what show, the school committee shall.
I think the way it's worded is, you know, it allows for that to continue on every year.
It does, it just doesn't.
Refirming, you know?
It doesn't people, I guess, to consider the impact on the superintendent. And I don't know how to, I mean, it's not really policy to say you need to consider those things, but I don't know how to help people keep that on their radar. I mean.
Changes. Around the election time, no?
Yes, it should be, but I don't know, maybe, I mean, I guess we just need to embed it in the oral culture of the committee. But I mean, in some cases, a change in the chairmanship may reduce the stress on the superintendent. If that person is not working well, lieutenant or is demanding too much time or whatever. So it's not that that maintaining a longer term is necessarily better, but people do need to consider the relationship with the superintendent, the working relationship with the superintendent. So I guess we just leave that to the oral tradition of the committee. I can't think of a way to make that part of a policy.
So do you know the other thing that struck me is that this, um, these paragraphs that come from the regional agreement?
Yeah.
Those should probably, and look, if you're going to make any substantial changes in them, they probably should be done as a separate paragraph because otherwise all of this wording has been filed with the state in our regional agreement. And there's a possibility that if somebody didn't like that, somebody like in the town, for example, didn't like, you know, someone wanted to be on the board and they don't like the terms that you're, you're writing down or how you've changed it. They could go get the regional agreement and say, your regional agreement is filed with the state, it's been signed off by the, and, and it's not, you don't just get to make a policy that that goes against your, and I'm not saying you're doing that here. I'm just saying, you know, think that from the regional agreement, there's three paragraphs, one on elections, vacancies and organizations. I think if you want to make any changes, you should keep those and then make additional, maybe.
Clarifications.
Clarifications. So that someone can't, somewhere down the road, if they're, you know, they're ticked off at somebody, don't like the way. Um, so that someone can't, somewhere down the road, if they're, you know, they're ticked off at somebody, don't like the way something's going. They pull out regional agreement and say, that's not what your agreement says.
Right. I know, I think you're right about that.
And I'm not saying you've made any changes in here that are.
Substantive, but still you're introducing language that's not the same as the.
Correct.
So um, so. Um, what we tried to do just now was to clarify something there, but maybe we.
Maybe you do that in a separate paragraph.
Yeah, or maybe we just don't worry about it because it's not that. I don't think, I don't know how much something like that is even gonna come, but.
Just, what is the absolute driving force between changing the agreement? Is it just because the election wasn't held and it's unclear how to do that without an election?
No, no, we're not trying to change the agreement per se. We're trying to change the policy. BDA, which is old and not in alignment with the agreement.
Susan, can you just, um, because it looks like, if you look at, if you look at the content of BDA.
Yeah.
Right? If you look at that that content, can't you just, couldn't you just replace it with the language from the um. Regional agreement because it seems to address all of the points that are already in BDA. And then you could expand that.
It drops some of the content out, which is, I think we've, we agree here that that content can go, the, you know, peeking, rotating. Chairmanship and that kind of thing. Um, so yes, I think we can propose that the regional agreement language. Replace what's currently in BDA.
Yeah, and then if you wanted to put something in addition to that, then that could, then that could legitimately be part of your policy because. It doesn't change the regional agreement at all. So you would strike all the original BDA language and just. As a base starting point, start with the language from the regional agreement and then add to that if you wanted, add additional power. Clarification paragraphs to that, because then that's completely in line with the um. The regional agreement. And it and it takes out all the other pieces from BDA that don't work anymore.
Yeah, I think this is um, BDA refers to the organizational meeting, so I think that we don't need the elections paragraph. I think we only need the organization paragraph. Is that right?
Which one? Which paragraph?
So B- BDA, the heading for BDA says school committee organizational meeting. It's all about. Electing the chairs and stuff, officers and terms. In the regional agreement, that means we could just take that last paragraph that says organization and put it in. And skip the vacancies and elections paragraph. Right?
Vacancies and elections, which is the, which is the remainder of that piece.
Elections are are gonna be moot as soon as the election happens. That whole election paragraph is, doesn't have to do with anything anymore. Um, so that's already set. We don't need that in the policy. Vacancies, my guess is there must be someplace, this, does this BDA deal with? Oh, yeah.
Well, you got to keep part of it in, Susan, because it says therefore all positions will be for four-year term.
Yeah, but I mean, that's gonna happen no matter what. We don't need a policy that says that. That's already. That's already um, going to occur. So it's not anything in the future, does it? It does it have to? I don't think that it relates to anything.
No, not after the first election.
Yeah, so I think we could then keep the vacancies and organization paragraphs and put those in place of BDA. Is that right?
Yeah.
You think, Mike, we could just take those two paragraphs and replace BDA with those?
Yeah, after the first paragraph of BDA, you're saying?
Oh, you, uh, no, I didn't say anything about keeping the first paragraph. Let's see. No, the first paragraph would come out too, because we don't have district annual elections anymore.
Yeah.
Um, so it would just say, this is about the organizational meeting, so it would just say. I mean, I would reverse the order. I'd put organization from the regional agreement. I'd put the organization paragraph first. And the vacancy paragraph second. And I think it's, it, and keep the original language. Don't make those edits that we just talked about a few minutes back. Just to be, keep the language consistent with the regional agreement. So, does that make sense, what I'm saying? Are you following me?
That makes sense.
Okay, so we'll propose tonight. As a first read, that the organization is paragraph one from the regional agreement. And um, the vacancies is paragraph two from the regional agreement and everything in current BDA gets taken out. Comfortable with that, Mike? Okay?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, good. I will um, put that in the minutes and we'll be ready to just. Talk briefly about that tonight.
Susan, I have one question on the elections piece of the regional agreement, elections piece. How about that second paragraph, starting with thereafter? It talks about residencies and things like that.
Yeah, I I had that marked. Uh, that's why I highlighted that because I thought, well, maybe that piece.
That might, you might want to keep in, uh, because it talks about members have to be residents and that's, that's part, that's a policy piece.
After the biennial state elections, as the term of office of the committees expire. There should be elected the required number of committee members who are residents of the appropriate member towns. But that's still, it's about elections, not about the organization of the committee.
Yeah, the the BDA, it only takes place after the election has happened.
Yeah.
Whereas the regional, the regional agreement is talking about when and how to have elections.
Yeah, I think there must be.
It also talks about residencies, talks about the qualifications pursuant to a master on the law.
But but this.
Back to the rotating uh, committee, uh, the chairman piece, like. The regional agreement talking about members from towns. That refers to how many people from each town elected to the committee in general, right?
Right.
And then what we're saying is to remove within the committee, the requirement to have a chairperson flip from one town to the other.
Like, what is, do you know what MGL seven, um, chapter seventy-one fourteen is? Is that, is, are you saying that talks about the chairmanship? Or does it, does that talk about qualification of school committee members? Do you know?
I'm only going off of the way the agreement reads. Uh, I don't know that one specifically. Do you?
I don't.
But it's in here, references it. So that's why I was wondering if that's something you would want to keep in. I I don't know what it is, so.
Um, but still, regardless, um, Jeff, this whole section is about the election of the school committee members. And not the organization of the committee, which is what BDA. The heading of it, so BDA doesn't deal with.
Yeah, I get it. Yep, okay.
Elections of the membership broadly.
Yeah, alright.
So I think we can, uh, but but it does raise the point. I'll, I will take a look uh, back at the other policies to. There might, yes, uh, I'll I'll check, I'll check to see if there's something else about the elections broadly, but um, the organizational meeting will do. Paragraph one is the organization from the regional agreement and paragraph two is the vacancies from the regional agreement. Okay, alright, good. Thank you very much. We'll talk about that tonight. So the second item. Is the, is a mock-up plan for. Reviewing the policy manual and, which is one of the charges here. For some reason, I have lost my. Let me see here, where are we? Oh, here we go. So if you open the policy manual review cycle spreadsheet. What I did was I looked at every section of the policy manual and I looked at how many policies. We have in each section, how many haven't been reviewed since two thousand sixteen or before that. And then, and then I, of course, I'm dumbfounded at how many policies we have, which just feels like it's crazy. We had three hundred and five policies sitting in that manual. And then I thought, well, I wonder what M A C recommends. And so then I compared how many policies they had in each of these sections and, you know, with the idea that um. Of course, because we're a regional district, that may require us to have some additional policies sometimes, or, for example, we still have on the books. Uh, facilities policy that applies to the elementary schools and a different one that applies to Tohonto because the facilities are different and need different. Parameters. Okay, so these numbers shouldn't align exactly necessarily, but look at the personnel one. I thought that was really different. Where there were thirty-five policies in the M A C manual, but we have fifty-three. I thought, wow, that's a difference. We should be looking at why why that, why we have so many more there. And um, when I glanced through some of those, for example, there were many references to, um, you know, basically, this is addressed through contract. So we just had a policy that that basically said whatever the contract says. So I have a feeling that we may be able to condense our, uh, some of those personnel policies. That simply, you know, has, it's a broader umbrella policy that says these various topics are addressed by contract. Um, so anyway, um, I was, I was looking at um. Uh, these comparisons and thinking, well, how would we spread a review across these, make sure that everything in the policy manual gets looked at at least once every five years. Without overwhelming ourselves in any given year. So um, I started with, you know, we had done foundations and. We'd done part A recently. And I thought, well, we should take it, see if we can carry a little more of this burden this year. And I thought, maybe this summer, Jeff, I'd like your. Thoughts on this. Maybe this summer, uh, we could ask Bob to take a look at the fiscal management policies.
That'd be the time to do it.
Okay.
Yep.
And um, facilities, there's only, there are only three that haven't been looked at since two thousand sixteen, so. We could still do that before the end of the year and negotiation also has just a few. So I thought maybe we could knock off a few of these. Uh, still in twenty twenty-one. And then um. Then I thought, well, the board governance and operations ones. I mean, uh, if you look at um. You know, one of the ones here, one of the categories here that needs attention is um. Personnel. Personnel, I think, was the one that stood out as the, as a needy category. Um, hadn't been looked at for a while. It's a discrepancy with M A C policies. Uh, but I pushed it out to twenty twenty-two to twenty-three because I was thinking, really, we should get the board governance um, policies in place because. We want to make sure those have been updated before new committee members are elected. And whenever this, whenever this amorphous election takes place, who knows? It seems like we should get that part of the policy manual updated before that takes place. So I put, I put um, board governance on for this next year as well as community relations, which is um. Us, you know, one of the smaller ones, I guess. And then I spread these out. So the last, the last ones I put up in twenty twenty-four, twenty-five area. Um, had more policies that had been updated in two thousand eighteen, not all of them, but more of them. So um, I pushed them out further. So if you look at the bottom of the spreadsheet, you'll see a tab for every section of the. Every section of the manual, A is empty because we just did A. But if you flip to section B, you'll see that I just made a list, policies in need of review. And when, if there was any notation of when they were last reviewed. And then policies that were reviewed more recently. So if you flip across the sections, you get a quick view of. Just how many policies we're talking about and when, when they were last reviewed. And I can credit Cliff on this because I know Cliff oversaw the updating of a ton of um, policies just before I came on. We were still voting some of them. So all those two thousand eighteen reviews were done by Cliff. And really, there should be. I mean, I, what this revealed to me by looking at this is that nobody has been systematically. Overseeing the review of this policy manual over time. That's what I took away from it. There just were no dates on these things. Uh, except, except when things were called forward, you know, because Karen was involved in a district review or something and. The state is saying you need to update this policy. These policies come forward a piecemeal. But in terms of a systematic review, making sure that we've got things updated, i- it seems to me it hasn't been happening. So. This is my first thoughts on how to make, you know, put something in place that says every year, there's some portion of this. Manual that gets a a look at, a look at, and we've already found in looking at. Um, part A, that they're just outdated things in there. Um, so. I think it's important that we do this, that we set a plan. Uh, I'd like your thoughts on whether you think this is a reasonable plan. Or whether you'd make changes. What do you, whether you, what are you thinking?
Seems reasonable.
Do you think, Jeff?
No, I think it's reasonable.
Okay, and um, Mike, do you think it's possible that we could meet in? Um, May, June, or even. May, May, June would probably be best, but maybe even the summer to deal with those other topics in the twenty twenty-one column.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm away the last week of May, but yeah.
Okay, alright, good. Um, okay, so I would suggest that we put this out as a first read tonight also. Um, so that if the committee has any feedback, they can make it and then we can make sure that we have a plan to guide us going forward. Alright, I think that's it. Anything else on the agenda or anything else you can anticipate that we're going to need, other than those items in the twenty twenty-one column? That we're going to need to meet on um, for policy, Jeff, before June?
Uh, no. Not, nothing that's come up.
Okay. Alright, so we'll just uh, be on hold and um. Mike, why don't we um. Offline, we'll see if we can find it, a time to meet, maybe even, I would say maybe even early June would be best. What do you think about that? As it?
I have to, yeah, the, I have to get the exact dates to you, but yeah.
Okay, alright, I mean, you'll be back. You're away the end of May, you said, right?
End early June, but I I don't know.
Oh, and early June, okay. Alright, well, we can push it out into second week in June, whatever.
Something like that.
Somewhere around there, okay. Alright, um. Sounds good. I think we're all set.